Lieutenant Arnold Stus, representing the District One Community Responsibility, I brought a contingency of the D one command with me as well. So Major Paul Kimoto and Captain Henry Roberts is also here. So I'm just gonna get right into the statistics for the month of June. So motor vehicle theft for this month was all for the past month of June was eight on the previous was three burglaries were nine previous to that was four thefts were twenty three of previous twenty nine U M Vs or car break-ins were eight previous to that was seven assaults were ten previous sixteen six assaults were two previous three graffiti cases were both zero for both months and drug offense related arrests were four previous to that was twelve total cost for service for your particular in June was one thousand nine hundred and ninety six compared to the previous month of uh two thousand one hundred and eighty two uh at this point in time we're gonna bring up the uh the commands command staff to address the.
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Paul Komodo. Um, it's been a while since I've been here. Uh, so I figured I'd come and talk to you folks. I just wanted to come and show my appreciation to the Chinatown downtown community uh for their um patience during the time we had the power outage. Um, just to let you guys know, we had approximately nineteen or so intersections that we staffed up to nineteen intersections that we staffed twenty four seven uh for multiple days and um, you know, the community really came out to to give us support, some kind words, people handed us handed out food and drinks to our officers. So I really want to thank everybody. Um, during those times, we did do a lot of burglary mitigation patrols during the night because we recognize that alarms may not have been on. And uh, I believe that those efforts were successful because uh, I don't believe there were any major incidents during those times. Um, but I just want to thank the community for really supporting the peace during that time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do you think any pressing questions at this point in time?
All right, thank you. Is there anyone online who has any um questions? Not counting board members. All right, thank you. Anyone in our audience that has any questions? All right, not hearing none, not seeing none. We'll go ahead and start off. We have Board Member Kevin Lai, please.
Chair, thank you. Um, I just uh wanted to ask Lieutenant, the um Kamali Mini Park is becoming such a an issue with our area. Um, I'll be discussing this during our period of public concerns, but just to kind of jump jump to the chase, there are some images that were collected by some of the constituents and mainly with the increased numbers and uh number of tents with walls that are in Kamali Mini Park, there is encroachment around the area, especially on the property such as Capital Place and also Kukui Plaza. This resulted recently in uh someone running into our building and running out with a definite lack of clothes, kind of terrorizing some of the residents in our area. And uh, it really perhaps could be mitigated if again, we could find some way to try to um address some of the issues in the laws or statutes that are being broken. Again, separate from the issue of homelessness itself, I just hope that we can find a way to address that and appreciate your help with this. And uh, again, any effort you can provide would be fantastic. Thank you.
Certainly, um, you know, we've been tasking our officers to go there periodically to to conduct enforcement. Um, I do want to report to you that we do have a plan for this. Uh, recently we've um actually gotten clarification of the status of that piece of property. I understand that in twenty nineteen it was um given to the police, I'm sorry, to the fire department uh to manage. Um, and as a result, I think all of the signs that were up there, um, the signs are big, right? Um, our park closure signs were were removed and since then, I think um they've had a hard time in managing that property. Of course, it's not fenced in, so people were coming in and out at all times of the day. And because of the signs weren't there, I think the officers were having a difficult difficult time doing some enforcement. Um, since then, we've we're clarified all of that. And um, and how could I report to you that actually yesterday I went down there personally and spoke to the community there. We've had a sort of a town hall session with about thirty minutes with with the various people that were in camp there. And I explained to them um the status of the park and that I explained to them that because of all the complaints that we've been in getting receiving from the community that um we're going to do enforcement and because it was city property, um, they were going to be trespass. Um, but also I told them that uh we will reach out to um Heidi Mitchell and to I H S and proper and and give proper um outreach to them so that they have an alternative, right? So I actually talked to her today. Um, and she sent her people out there to to do some outreach to them, like give them some some place to go. So um, I understand this is a long simmering problem, um, but please be patient and um, I hope to give you some good news next time around. Um, and uh, my plan is to help us with the city property.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other board members? Okay, we're gonna start from the far left, which you launched with a clock, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you so much for the blackout uh police uh been around for traffic intersections. I've watched it and then it's also that presence also help, like you said, mitigate a lot of the opportunity to burglarize. And the Chinatown community really appreciates that. And I know that our friend Murphy reached out and then thanked the uh workers and provided some meals and then he's back in business. At this point, we're still healing. And so we're hopeful that tonight's speaker, uh, he calls Mr. Kelly would be able to provide more meaningful help than what has happened uh in the past four days plus another day. And uh, it's really bad for seniors because they can't get down from the building to go shopping or get medication. And luckily, nobody died out of this, but we need to be more prepared uh for a future uh thing because I don't have much faith in Hiko not having another event like this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a disturbing.
Thank you. I just want to say uh shout out to Don Murphy too. Like like you said, he really did um pass out deals to us, uh, to the officers and the train. So yeah, thank you very much to the community. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And going down the line, who is next? Mr. McDonald, Board Member McDonald, go ahead, please. Check. Thank you, officers, for being here. Um, I've asked this question before, so I'll just keep it brief, seeing but seeing some new faces from HPD, I feel obligated to ask it again. And that is just, I know we're just out of the legislative legislative session now, but I feel it is a big uh responsibility of this board to help support you, as I am a big supporter of HPD and all that you do. And so I would ask you, if you can, uh, please keep us informed of any legislature that comes before the city council or the state legislature that you feel we can we can support and we can get behind our legislatures and and hold their feet to the fire when they're here to get them to vote and pass legislation that will help you to better do your job. So if there's anything that we can do to help and support you, please let us know. I'm a big fan and I wanna support you the best that I can. Thank you.
Absolutely. We we just have to do it through our processes. So um Major Braden Ogada is the legislative liaison for the legislature and stuff like that. So we 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 usually forward the information to him and then he uh takes it forward. But I'll I'll email you some things, sir, and then um we can have a conversation on the side.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other board members? All right, hearing none. Um, once again, um, I'd like to thank the police that were on the ground for everything they did um during those days. You guys did a great job. So thank you. And please inform those officers and those officers in blue that we do appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. You have a good day. See you next month. Thank you. From this point on, I'm gonna ask um all board members, remember to keep your questions to one minute. One minute, please. All right. Um, next up, we're gonna have the election of officers and board business. So elections of officers are to serve from July twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. We'll start off with the chair. Go ahead.
Chair, I'd like to nominate you for the next year as Chip Woodport thirteen.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we don't need a second on these. Yeah. Um, is there anyone else? All right, not hearing none. We're still gonna go ahead and take a vote. The vote has to be by name, please. Okay. Go ahead.
Armstrong.
Carvalho.
Fitzsimmons.
Carvalho.
Isokane.
Carvalho.
Lai. McCarny.
Ernest Carvalho.
McDonald.
Abstain.
Shubert Quoc.
Carvalho.
Thompson. Okay. M Carval.
All right, thank you. So thank you once again to allow me to share. Hopefully it won't be that long. All right, next we're gonna go to vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Sean Fitzsimmons.
Right, Sean, do you accept? So we're gonna go ahead, oh, this air, is there anyone else nominating? No, not seeing none. Go ahead.
Armstrong.
Fitzsimmons.
Fitzsimmons.
Oh, Fitzsimmons.
Isokane.
Fitzsimmons.
Lai.
Fitzsimmons.
McCarny.
Fitzsimmons.
McDonald.
Fitzsimmons.
Shubert Quot.
Fitzsimmons.
Thompson. Oh. Carvalho. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you. All right, next we're gonna go on to secretary. Do we have any nominations?
Chair, I nominate Ross Isakani.
All right, is there any other nominations? Go ahead. Go ahead, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I'll nominate myself. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other ones? All right, not hearing any, we'll go ahead between Ross Isakani and Kevin Lai. Go ahead.
Armstrong.
Lai.
Fitzsimmons.
Isakani.
Isakane.
Isakane.
Lai.
Lai.
McCarny.
Isakane.
McDonald.
Lai.
Shubert Quoc.
Isakane.
Thompson. Carvalho.
Isakane.
Okay, so Isakane.
All right, thank you. Next, we're gonna go ahead. Um, um, even though I was told that we didn't have to do this one, um, I was advised that we should go ahead by, um, Lloyd, go ahead and do a election for treasurer. Yeah. So do we have anyone for treasurer? Nominate. Go ahead. Go ahead, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I'll nominate myself for treasurer.
All right, uh, go ahead and nominate um Shulon Shuber Quoc, please. Anyone else? Ah, here and none. Go ahead.
Armstrong.
Lai.
Fitzsimmons.
Quoc.
Isokane.
Shubert Quoc.
Lai.
Lai.
McCarny.
Lai.
McDonald.
Lai.
Shubert Quoc.
Shubert Quoc.
Thompson. Carvalho.
Shubert Quoc.
There's a tie.
So being the tide, no one moves on to their position, the position will stay vacant. Okay. All right, next we're gonna move on to meeting date, time, locations, and format. The NCO. Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I s- suggested we take the January second meeting. That's the second of January first Thursday in the month as a vacation day and that be our only absence for the next upcoming year.
Okay, so yeah, as I was gonna finish up, um, the NCO has asked that we try to take three of these breaks, but this is a downtown Chinatown and we get a lot of people that, um, a lot of businesses and trades and things that come through. So technically we've only been taking January. They would like us to take two, but let's um hammer this out really quick and get this moving so we can get on to HICO, okay? So does anyone else have any suggestions? So is it only Jan? No. Meeting date, time. Okay, we'll get to that. Yeah, I didn't see that. Thank you. No, 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 that's it, that's good. We're gonna stick and we'll just move it back. Same with the recess. Yeah, we.
I would like to suggest, Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I suggest that we take a recess on July third, twenty twenty five?
Hmm?
Okay.
Right, there you go.
Never mind.
All right, anyone else? All right, let's take a um vote on the recess for January. Oh yeah, that's missing. Yeah. Can I do this? Okay. All right. Is there any um objections? Nope, not hearing none. Since no, I admit it's gonna be our time off. Okay, now we're gonna go meeting date, time, location, and format. Um, go ahead, Russ, um, Board Member Russ Isakani.
I I moved that we leave it the same as this year.
Yeah, which end? Anyone else? Any discussions? No objections? Hearing none, we'll continue to meet Thursdays at six o'clock every day, same format. Yeah. In the library or whatever comes up. All right, next we're gonna go to some adoption of oral testimony rules. Hold on one minute. So meeting materials, hands out and materials are available at our Google Drive. Rules of speaking. Any audience member may raise their hand to speak on an agenda item at the announced time. When recognized by the presiding officer, questions slash comments are limited to two minutes after the audience are limited to two minutes. Yep. And that's for the audience. After the audience, board members may raise their hand to speak with questions and comments limited to one minute. Request for follow ups may or may not be granted by the presiding officer. Audience slash board members should refrain from interruptions and or disruptive conduct. Any individual not following these rules may be ruled out of order. So as we've been going on, we've we've been doing this one minute for us and we found that one minute we can ask questions and two minutes for the audience. Is there any objections to this? Any discussions? Nope, not hearing none. We'll go ahead and move that. Next, we will present team. Presentations of materials are only permitted by presenters listed on the agenda or by the neighborhood board assistant and officers of the board on behalf of the presenter. Presenters are urged to keep the presentations to under ten minutes, to ten minutes and under, okay? Unless otherwise authorized by the chair, subsequent responses during questions answers should be kept brief and direct or may be addressed in private follow-ups. Do we have any discussions on this? Go ahead, Board Member McCarty.
But Chair, I might I might suggest that the people that come in for community concerns, sometimes they're giving us an early heads up on something that's happening in our neighborhood. And if there's no discussion about it, but if they can leave materials, I think that might could be helpful to us.
Okay, thank you. We can do that. All right. Any this other discussions? Nope. Any objection? Nope. Then we'll go ahead and roll it in. All right. This is just a note. The board may vote upon any listed agenda items. Items not listed cannot be voted upon unless allowed under H R S ninety two, AKA sunshine law. Matters raised during public concerns cannot be voted upon, but may be discussed by the board at the discretion of the presiding officer. Members of the board may not raise a matter not listed on the agenda during public concerns, but may request inclusion of any items on the agenda in advance of the meeting. And this was just a note. All right, go ahead and move. Go ahead, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. Could you just restate the first part of that sentence that you just read?
The more the board may vote upon any listed agenda items. Items not listed cannot be voted upon unless allowed under H R S ninety two, the sunshine law.
The next part.
Matters raised in public concerns cannot be voted upon, but may be discussed by the board. And when I mean say discuss, the discuss is they may ask what time and things like that, but no real interactions like we do with um the boards, like we've been doing before.
Uh, okay, but the next sentence then I think is what I'm after.
No, okay. So you have to the next one.
Huh? Could you? Chair, if you could, yeah, just read.
No, so, oh yeah, so yes, oh, that's what you want, the last one. Members of members of the board may not raise a matter not listed on the agenda during public concerns, may request inclusion of an item on the agenda in advance of the meeting. So if you're on, you're presenting, right? And like you do, I'm Kevin for the neighborhood board watch. We're saying that you cannot come up and talk about the um neighborhood board walk so long as it's listed. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair, but that does not mean that members of the board can rise as individuals to speak about things that are not on the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next we'll move to our presentation.
Excuse me, Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question about that? Um, so we're approached by people who share their concerns with us and we want to share their concerns with all of us, with the board and the community. And I think that that limitation reduces our ability to represent the people who are coming to us.
So um what we want to do is we want to keep it to who's going to speak. So if they want to address an issue and they cannot come up, then they can address the officers. Yep. And the officers can um go ahead and address it for them. Um, or they can send in, like um I've had um people send in to us and ask us to ask of certain topics. Yeah. Uh, we don't want everybody um controlling, controlling. But I tell you what, let's table that part for now and we'll come back to it next month on that. Okay. How's that? Board Member Shulon Shuber Quoc, this is gonna be the last question I'm gonna take on this since this is a note.
I suggest that if the board members has concern big enough, they should put on the agenda for the rest of the board to discuss and and vote on.
Yeah, and anything should go be um put on, um, anyone that wants anything on the agenda and they know that Bob Armstrong and others, they can come to me and I'll put it on the agenda. I have no problem, but let me know in advance. Don't wait for the last minute because I have a strict thing about my agendas. I like my agendas to be done on the twentieth. So, all right. Thank you. We'll move on forward. So next we're gonna start with the presentation and I'd like to um say that very fond thank you to One Electric Company. They didn't have to be out here, but they are out here. So Brandon Bailey, who's the Vice President of Customer Service for HECO, will be speaking at this time. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, um, thanks for having us. I do appreciate the opportunity uh to speak on path for Hawaiian Electric. Um, I'm glad to be back in front of the neighborhood board system. I used to uh serve as the Chair of the Neighborhood Commission for four years back in the early two thousands. So I appreciate all that you do for the community. I I believe in the mission of the neighborhood board system. Uh, what you do is very important to give our our communities a voice. So thank you. Um, okay, jumping right in, you know, I want to give you a brief update on the outages. Uh, everyone knows what happened last week. Uh, I'd be happy to answer questions uh with respect to the cause, but what I can tell you as of today, the investigation is still ongoing. Uh, we're hoping to wrap that up in the next thirty days. Uh, we're doing a root cause analysis. They're doing analysis on, you know, the equipment um that caught fire that was destroyed, including the cables, the splicer, you know, slices and all the other uh pieces of equipment that, you know, might have been uh involved in the in the failure that caused the outage. So, you know, as soon as we know that cause, I'm sure that we're gonna update the the public because I know that's uh what everyone wants to hear. Um, I can tell you that, you know, we've been working with the downtown communities, you know, from the time that the outage started, we are working with uh our commercial customers and our residential customers, trying to give them as much information that we could. Uh, I know that's probably the most important thing that we can provide during an outage. People want to know, you know, what's going on and we could always do better as far as the information that we push out to the public. Uh, you know, but we did, we did try our best to to give the community the information that they needed during the outages. Uh, we've also been working with, uh, we know that, you know, our customers were impacted, you know, uh, during this outage. It was a very unusual outage, you know, especially that there wasn't a a hurricane or a major storm. It's very unusual that we had an outage that would last that long. Uh, and we do apologize for that. We know how much of a hardship and an impact it it caused, especially for our small, you know, businesses. Uh, so we've been meeting with uh our commercial customers. We met with the Chinese Chamber of Commerce yesterday. Uh, we're volunteering to help them, you know, customers fill out forms, claim forms that they can submit to the company um for their losses. Um, so we've been doing that kind of thing and, you know, we've also been trying to push business towards the downtown, you know, businesses through our social media and doing those type of things that we know that uh our our customers really need um that kind of support. So we're trying to do the best we can with that. Uh, we're also looking at ways outside of the the claim process to potentially help customers. Um, we're working on what that would ultimately look like. Uh, but again, that would be apart from, you know, anything that's submitted as a claim. Um, you know, as we develop that with uh within our company and with our partners out in the community, we'll push that information out as well. But with that, I know you guys probably have a lot of questions. I know we have a lot of people online that I'd like to get to. So uh, I can take questions at this time. Uh,
All right, thank you. So before we start online, we're gonna start here in the audience. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? No one in the audience at this time? Then we'll go online. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak? Well, go ahead and start off with, um, Nicole Reed, please, Nicole.
Sorry, getting my phone online. I'm in the middle of dinner with the kids.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you for the time today. I just had a couple of questions, um, one of which started with the community partners for organizing that assistance outside of the claim process. Who are those community partners and what are you um looking?
Nicole, Nicole, can I hear you? Why don't you turn the video off and just focus on the audio part?
Is that better? Is that better? Can you hear me better this way?
All right.
I will call back.
Yeah, I'm going to do that. All right. Do we have anyone else online that would like, Nicole? We haven't gotten away from you. We'll come back to you. We can't hear you at this time. Um, is there anyone else online who would like to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. All right, actually, see none. You guys are getting way easier tonight. Okay, we're going to start with the board and we're going to start off with Vice Chair Fitzsimmons.
Um, Mr. Bailey, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Uh, just so I'm, just so I'm very clear, uh, the, the public has thirty days to make a claim, correct?
That's right, yes.
For power outage that occurred from June tenth to June thirteenth, right?
That's correct.
And if I heard you correctly, you guys are still asking for thirty more days to ascertain the cause and origin of the blackouts, right?
That's correct.
So wouldn't it make sense to give the community more time to file their claims than thirty, than just thirty days?
So.
You know, like we, 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 we house, we, we service elderly people. So a lot of businesses here and a lot of these people are not computer literate. Don't you think it'd be better to give more time to the community to file their claims?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So the, the claims process is governed by tariff, right? So we're a regulated public utility. Our tariff rules establish the timeframes that we have to consider claims. I'm not saying that there's no leeway for flexibility. So, you know, as I mentioned to, you know, when I was interviewed, if there's extenuating circumstances, if somebody needs more time to gather documents, we're going to be flexible, you know, in working with a claimant. So if they need time to put documents together, that sort of thing, you know, we're happy to do that and work with customers. As far as, you know, there's, there's the, sorry, there's the there's the middle deadline, but that's independent from our, our root cause analysis, right? So the root cause analysis is conducted separately from.
No, I understand they're two different things, but it's kind of funny that he goes asking more time for them to determine the cause and origin of a, a power outage that wasn't derived from a weather event. Frankly, it's probably derived from uh lack of maintenance, correct?
No, I can't say that.
Potentially, right? And, you know, it would seem fair to give the community at least more leeway um than thirty days to file a claim uh for all these businesses that lost money for three days from June tenth to June thirteenth, as well as everyone else in in the community.
So, like I said, and I'll reiterate, you know, we're, we're here to help them submit the claims. So if they need flexibility, we're open to that. But as I said, the process is governed by, you know, rules and tariffs, so.
What tariffs govern that process?
Rule sixteen is our liability tariff.
Yeah, I'm going to have to move on then. But we'll get back to you.
Company tariff, a company policy?
That's a, a tariff that's been approved by the Public Utilities Commission.
All right, thank you, thank you. Before we move on to the next board member, I want to see if Nicole, Nicole, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, can you?
Can you hear me, Nicole?
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
All right, can anyone else hear um Nicole online or myself?
Let me try turning off my video.
Maybe she could add the questions to the chat.
Right, Robert. Robert Quatero, can you hear me? So they can hear it.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you, Chair, and I can also hear Nicole. Thank you.
All right, Nicole, um, do you want to go ahead and move on? To Board Member Armstrong, as soon as they get this fixed up, we'll get you going. Board Member Armstrong, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bailey, for being here. Um, besides my personal concern, being a public relations professional, that you weren't out front on this story. I do want to ask you about the timely and um and complete adjudication of the claims. Um, how long, let's say somebody submits it on the thirtieth day, how long does the utility think it's going to take before a response is made? And what is the appeal process once the decision is made for the customer?
Yeah, thanks for that. So, once the, the root cause is determined, it's thirty days. So we, once we receive a claim, our, our target is to approve it within thirty days. The appeal process is, if for whatever reason, you know, a customer does not agree with our decision, they have the right to go directly to the Public Utilities Commission and file a, a complaint at that level, and then they'll adjudicate it at the commission.
All right, next we're going to go um to Shulon. Shulon Shubert Quark.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming, Mr. Bailey. I've worked in Chinatown for over thirty years, advocating for Chinatown, and I'm very sad to report to you that people are not happy with HECO, obviously, and that they suspect that the manhole wasn't serviced for over fifty years, and which caused the big meltdown, and that uh we were lucky that we didn't catch the gas spike. We could have united um Chinatown. So the big question is, that's the past. We want to know how can we prevent something like this from happening again, affecting so many people, like you heard me said, CD's were locked up, elevators not working. And one of the most grievous things, merchants and uh some of the smaller uh buildings, there is no HECO. You know, uh, what do you call this uh machine that powers uh for them to even keep their food cold? You have the machines to power some of these businesses, but you, for three whole days you did not do that. So a lot of wastage of, and, and food rot and, and spoiled in the freezers. And then employees got to go back and restaurants the same. So what we call that the generators. You did not even bring one single generator into the community. Yeah. And that is unforgivable, to tell you that. And that happened before when HECO, two years or two years ago.
Excuse me, excuse me, Shulon.
Yeah, uh, let me finish. So.
Finish, please.
Yeah, thank you. So two or three years ago, had a ten-hour outage, claiming that they have some emergency work and no uh generator were, were, were put in to help the merchants. So this is one very grievous thing I want you to work on. And the second thing is, they believe, uh, not.
Shulon, you need to ask the questions, please.
The claims being processed are never really paid out. So it is like the BS thing. So that's why you don't have to trust the people. But you charge people the surcharges regularly, but the service part, no. So this is coming from the people that I'm vocalizing here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Shulon.
So there's a lot to unpack there, but let me try to start with, with the first. He goes with inspection of our, of our equipment. So we do have a plan. And where they expect, inspect manholes, cables, slices, that sort of thing. So it, it's not true that we did not inspect that uh equipment for the past fifteen years. We do have a program that takes place. As far as, you know, updating the downtown network, we publicly said that it's aging infrastructure. It's been, you know, in service in some areas from the nineteen sixties and seventies. Uh, we can't replace everything at once. It's very expensive. Uh, but we do have a rotation. We've replaced twenty-five percent of the underground cables. It's going to take time to replace the rest, you know, the seventy-five percent. Given what's happened, we are expediting that work. So hopefully, you know, that's going to pick up and that will help with the resiliency. We're also adding other, you know, backup transformers and the sort of thing that are going to help prevent this type of outages going forward. Um, I do understand that businesses suffered. If we had generators to provide, we would have done that. We don't have that type of simple generation that we can take the individual business owners and the distribution lines that would have served if we had, you know, a large generator, they were all destroyed. So if we had that capability, yeah, it was destroyed underground. So the fire destroyed four circuits. You know, there's thousands of yards of cable that were destroyed that needed to be replaced. Um, so I, I hear the frustration. I understand it. I know where you're coming from. If there was something more we could have done with providing temporary generation, we would have done that. We just don't have the capability to do that.
All right, thank you. All right. Before we go on to any other board members, we're going to try a test. Nicole, are you there?
Yes, I, yes, I am. Hi.
Chair.
Hey Nicole, if you could just keep.
Oh, thanks. Ms. Reed has posted her questions to the chat.
Yeah, but we want to fix this because it's not really
Oh.
acceptable. I was just going to ask her, uh, Nicole, if you could please just keep, just keep talking and answer the audio.
Okay.
So, the claims process with respect to liability is uh, the rule, I'm not sure about the rule that governs the thirty days, but if it's not a rule sixteen, I will find that and I, I will get that to you. In the follow-up.
Are we, are we addressing my questions now? Sorry, I'm not.
In case it wasn't said, we are trying to.
Hold on, hold on. All board members, you cannot speak unless you're recognized by the chair. We already explained that, okay? So, no, no need, and I'll take care of that, okay? We're going to go ahead and move to the next board member while they try to fix this glitch that's going on. Next, we're going to go up through Board Member McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for being here. Um, I'm not going to ask about the power outage, the, the power brownouts or whatever we had earlier this month. Um, I've been here through three complete island-wide blackouts in the many years that I've been living on Oahu. Uh, so I'm going to ask about, uh, what I think is a, a larger concern for HECO, which is just its rates. We pay three times the national average per kilowatt hour here on Oahu. You asked what you could do to help our community, help our citizens and help our small businesses. We pay three times the national average per kilowatt hour. Now, I understand we're in an island and it costs more to produce things here, but I don't understand three times. This borders on nefarious, what, uh, the being, charging the people of Hawaii three times the national average. There's nothing else. We don't pay three times the national average price for milk or bacon or lumber. We pay three times for electricity. And then, and that's been for some time now, then COVID came and you raised your rates right after the COVID emergency ended. When people are already struggling to make their ends meet, they have been gone into debt or used their life savings to get through COVID. Businesses are struggling to get back on their feet and make their bills and you chose this time to raise your rates. My question to you is, if you're saying what can you do to help the, the citizens and small businesses of Oahu, what are you doing? How are you working to make things easier and give us some relief to what's already one of the most expensive utilities in the country? Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, we know that rates are high and, you know, one of the primary reasons for that is the, the link to fossil fuel. We're working hard to get off of fossil fuel. That pricing is very volatile. When prices go up for oil, prices go up for energy. It's a pass-through for our customers. We've been working really hard to transition to renewable energy sources. We're actually the leader in the nation with respect to integration of renewables. Uh, it's not going to happen over fired generation, uh, as we put new generation stability to the pricing because of the tie, you know, the volatility of the oil. Um, you know, we're at, I think it's thirty-three percent renewable for this island, over fifty percent for the big island. Uh, we're kind of leading the way with rooftop solar. We have way more than anyone else in the, in the country with respect to the number of our customers that are able to benefit from rooftop solar and lower their, their rates that way. Un- unfortunately, those that can't put, you know, solar on their roof or if they live in a condo, they don't have, you know, access to that type of benefit that some of our homeowners do. But we're looking at ways uh for condo owners and others to participate without having to put the solar on their roof. So they can buy an interest in a solar farm and use that as a virtual rooftop solar to help offset their bills. You know, we're looking at different ways and we have a lot of programs that support our low to moderate income customers as well, so they get, you know, some help on that side too.
If I may follow up just quickly, I, you mentioned the cost of fossil fuels, but isn't twenty percent of Hawaiian Electric's uh fuel garbage that you get for free from the community by burning refuse?
It, it's not free. So the city and county has a, a waste of energy facility. We buy electricity from their facility through a power purchase agreement. That power purchase agreement costs us money. And again, that cost is directly passed through to our customers. We don't earn any profit on the, the, you know, the power that we get from the city or any other independent power producer for that matter. And most of the generation that we use, a large, you know, portion of it is not owned by Hawaiian Electric. It's owned by independent power producers like the city.
I, I finally explained, Chair, but.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. No, hold on, hold on, hold on, please. All right.
Other board members were allowed follow-up questions.
No, 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 yes, and you already asked a follow-up question. You asked, so if you wanted to do a follow-up question, please ask. May I have, may I, Chair, may I follow up? And then I'll do it, but you didn't do that. The other, none of you guys are doing that and everybody needs to do that. That, that are the rules. We're going to follow the rules. Thank you.
So finally, businesses pay a higher rate for electricity than residents do. Now, I don't understand this either. Businesses don't seem to get any higher quality electricity than residents do, nor do they clearly by what we saw this month have any better guarantee of service. So why is it that businesses somehow have to pay more for their electricity than a, than a citizen or a, a government entity does?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm probably not the person, the best person to answer that question. That's a regulatory and a, a pricing question. I can tell you the cost to serve uh is based on the demand from a customer. So if we have to stand by for a commercial customer, we have to generate or have available for generation a larger quantity of electricity to serve that customer, whether they use it or not. That's not the case for most residential customers. It's, it's a very small load. We know how to manage for that. But for large commercial customers, the cost to serve them, there's a difference.
All right, thank you very much. One minute, please.
Hey, everybody. Thank, we're just uh checking the online participants. Um, instead of Nicole online, get anyone else online to please test their microphone right now.
This is Robert Quatero. My microphone's.
Okay, thank you. Understood, Robert. So we can hear the online participants. Nicole, that means there's something on your end uh that we cannot resolve for you from here. Um, but we did get your messages in the chat. I believe you put in four questions though. We're going to leave it to the board. Our audio is fine.
All right, so, um, Nicole, I want to look at your questions and then, um, before I take your questions, I'm going to go ahead and go down. Other board member, we're going to go to board members who have not spoken. Okay? Is there any other board member who wishes to say anything? Board member, um, Isakani, please, and then followed by Nicole's board.
Hey, Mr. Bailey. Uh, thank you so much for being here. Clearly, a lot of uh energy and excitement. It was a frustrating time. I know it's difficult for you all, definitely difficult for our residents. Um, you mentioned a lot of news has been made. These are really aged infrastructure, fifties and sixties. You mentioned in response, you're going to be expediting or accelerating your maintenance and upgrades of our transmission infrastructure. I'm just curious, as your expedited plan, are you running that by the Public Utilities Commission? Does the P U S C have regulatory oversight over your maintenance and upgrade plan? And if so, do you know what the timing is of when they should be looking at that plan?
So, yeah, so the public commission has general regulatory authority over all of our operations. If they wanted to see the details of a plan date, they can get that. Generally, you know, we're allocated a budget, you know, per year to do certain types of work, say capital improvements or infrastructure improvements. And it's really up to the utility to determine how to best use those funds. So if we use it in one area, say that, you know, updating the downtown network, we as the utility need to figure out where we're going to pull that money from, from other areas. So it's, it's more on our shoulders to determine how that money is used and how we make those improvements. But the commission does have general regulatory authority over all of our, our operations.
All right, um, any other board member who hasn't spoken? Kevin Li, Board Member Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bailey, in the headlines in the days after the, the incident, you know, there was talk of maybe ten years or so to be spent on the upgrades. Can you comment on, you know, the variance expected with that? Is that focused on the downtown area? But perhaps more importantly, within that process, do you anticipate the need to have any scheduled blackouts for specific zones or blocks or areas that are covered by the lines that are being repaired or, or improved? And to address and follow on the questions from earlier in the session, what mitigations will be provided to our residents and business owners when those are, events are scheduled to happen?
Yeah, so the, the ten years, I mean, that's an estimate, obviously. Um, it, it just goes toward, to the complexity of what the downtown network actually is. You know, you don't see much of, you know, the system, right? It's all underground. Uh, but part of the complexity uh and the timing, why it's difficult is because it's. Uh, but part of the complexity and the timing why it's difficult is because it's underground. Uh, it's, it's among the most difficult work for our crews to do. It's dangerous. Uh, uh, most people don't know, but those vaults are four by four by maybe five feet tall. And they're working with high voltage and they're working on lines that are de-energized right next to lines that are fully energized. Uh, so they have to do it slowly. They have to do it safely, uh, for our customers and for our employees. So that adds to the time. Uh, as far as, you know, the volume of work that needs to get done, there's thousands and thousands of yards of, you know, network that need to be replaced. Uh, and it's a balancing, right? We have to, we have to figure out what the proper timing to do that is. Cause not all of it is bad, right? It's aging, but it's like, you have a refrigerator that works. You don't necessarily wanna throw it away right after the warranty expires. You wanna get the most value from it. But we do, like I said, we do have a plan to replace and we're, well, you know, we're working through that. Before this happened, we were estimating ten years. Uh, we understand that it needs to get done quicker now based on the fragility of the downtown network. Um, so we're gonna try to expedite that. That plan is still being formed, you know, what that's gonna look like. And then did I miss any part of your question?
Uh, thank you. It was if and when those repairs are happening, if there is a known need for an outage.
Yes.
Communication and assistance, maybe.
Yeah, so there will definitely be sections where we'll probably have to take a planned outage. Uh, and the key there is that we'll try to do it at the least disruptive times of day. So by time, when most businesses are closed, we'll give as much notice, you know, as we can so businesses can prepare. Um, so we don't have to address the same type of issues that happened with a unplanned outage that happened last week.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're gonna go actually to Board Member Laurie McCarty.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here. I know it's a hot seat, so thank you.
Yeah.
Um, what can we expect with, uh, heart, with rail coming through? Uh, there's going to be, you're coming, gonna be coming down limits. I know utility, um, relocation is happening now in some areas, but also the columns and what have you are gonna be in. How is that affecting your plans for, um, updating the system or what, what should we expect when that happens?
Yeah, so we're working very closely with Heart and the other governmental agencies that are impacted, um, with the rail line. Uh, we're, we're trying to do it in a way that has the least amount of disruption for our customers. Um, and because it's planned, you know, that's easier to do, right? So we can understand where things need to be shifted and moved and we can do that with the least amount of disruption as possible. So, I mean, given our experience with other sections of heart, we've been able to do that pretty much seamlessly without impacting customers from, you know, as far as taking outages and that sort of thing. But we're working very closely with heart.
Okay, now before we go to anybody on the board, from Nicole Reed, she's the owner of Manas Fasha, which is a, um, great place to go to. Who are the community members who are being consulted for assistance outside of the current claim form? What is specifically covered in the current claim process? Where can we view the maintenance logs for the electrical grid for our community? Have the additional draws from the new large builds such as the rail station and hotels had effect on our age system? Has he could funded an impact study on our utilities for these new construction projects?
Yeah, maybe you, can you guys repeat the first two and then I'll handle them in that order?
Yes, you're very. Okay, what is, who are the community members who are being consulted for assistance outside of the current claim form? And what is specifically covered in the current claim process?
Okay, so I'll handle the first one. So, you know, like I said, we're, we're working with community partners to see what we can do to, you know, help downtown businesses, whether it be through compensation or pushing customers towards those businesses. Um, that's, obviously it's still fresh, right? So we're still trying to put that together, but we've been working with the chambers of commerce. Uh, we've been working with some of the larger customers that we know have, uh, you know, impact downtown that they can help us kind of like, you know, get a sense of what people need. Um, so that's happening. I'm not saying it's fully baked yet. We're still working on it. And like I said, we're gonna roll that out as soon as we, we know, uh, what it's gonna look like. But we do understand that people need help in the short term and we're trying to do that as quickly as possible.
All right, um.
And then as far as the claim process, so on the claim form, you can put down whatever you are claiming as a loss. We don't limit what people could actually place into that, uh, into that complaint form. Uh, but I, I will tell you under the tariff, you know, again, that's rule sixteen. Generally, um, you know, we can't guarantee perfect service, right? No utility in the, in the country can guarantee, you know, perfect service. Um, so when there's outages, we're generally not liable unless it was something that we could have prevented on our end through reasonable diligence. So that's the standard in the tariff. So if a loss occurs and we could have prevented it through reasonable diligence, we'll generally pay those losses.
All right, thank you. And before we go back to the board, I, I have a question for you. So my question is, where was the preventive maintenance of our cables for the last fifty years? I mean, I worked for Canon MCS in New York and said, I was, I was head of New York, Connecticut and New Jersey. I knew when these machines would go out and I would send technicians to these machines to do preventive maintenance on these machines. How could we, or how could Hiko allow such atrocities to happen? Fifty years is a long time to not go and do preventive maintenance. And the second question to that is, is there any rumors? Is it, eh, the rumors true? So we know that on the first night, Thursday, and I live in Atari, it was a whimper and everything went out. But on Monday night, we know that around six o'clock in the morning on Bethel Street, cause I live at the Gateway Plaza, smoke started coming out of these, um, manholes. Then just before ten, there was a explosion, like a big explosion in my home. I thank God that I had a surge protectors and then everything went dead at that point and fried our buildings, um, generators, yeah? So the thing that happened also on Monday was Hart electrified the third rail, which goes all the way from Halawa to Middles, Middle Street. And from what I'm understanding, that may even carry further. Is there any truth that maybe Hart might have played a small part in this and too much power?
So that's the first I'm hearing of that. You know, I, I haven't seen anything that would indicate that. Uh, like I said, our investigation is still ongoing. Um, but if I can adjust your first point as far as the preventative maintenance. So it's not true that the lines are fifty years old, but I'm not, I'm not saying that there hasn't been any preventative maintenance. Obviously on our generators and equipment, we do replacement and maintenance. What happened during this major outage, we don't know what caused it yet, but the lines basically burnt, the conduit burnt. Our facilities totally were destroyed underground. We don't know what caused that fire. Uh, we don't know if it was a maintenance issue. We don't, we don't know yet. You know, that will come out in the course of the investigation. Uh, but we do, as far as inspecting lines, we have guys that go out to these manholes, to the vaults. They take temperature readings to see if there's hot spots. You know, that will generally indicate if there is a, a potential for failure. And if they don't see that, you know, there's only so much you can do when facilities are underground, right? But we have a program where we rotate through, we inspect the lines, and we didn't see any indication that these lines were gonna be subject to failure.
Okay, so, um, before I move on to, uh, before I move on, John Fitzsimmons, um, so I'm saying as far as Kuliana goes, Senator, um, develop, is there something that you wanted to say? You may.
First of all, I'm gonna, you guys heard me in the media say leadership, and it was nothing to do with the neighborhood board. I was talking about our government and the city, a mayor and our governors. Nothing to do with anybody here on the board. First of all, I cleared it up and great job. Everything that we had addressed, people was thinking that not, not like Hiko, but other people in the community didn't realize. Exactly what you're saying is what we're saying. And the reason why I got involved, like I said, is like a community members that have shops in Chinatown was asking why government is not showing any interest. So that's the reason why I went to the streets and I did what I did. And, and, and Hiko was responsible. They, they called and all of that, but I just, like I said, if you guys, anybody got offended on the neighborhood board in Chinatown, it was never my intention. I wanted to get our, our state officials, our, our senators, our representatives, anybody to come out and give you guys, um, some kind of corrective answer instead of telling the Chinatown community just to go on a website. And then now tonight I'm hearing they're giving them only thirty days. I mean, that, that's, that's an insult and a slap in the face to everybody that was affected. So like I said, um, that, that's the, that was my intention, to help my community, to help the Chinatown community, because we know there is a language barrier. And everybody can use the computer, like I said. We want, um, Hawaiian Electric to do more. Um, you know, the P U C is the P U C, but Hawaiian Electric can do more because they have the investments. They have the, they have the revenue that they can do more. But they just gotta work with each other within the internals and, and do more because they need to do more. And that's the reason why I had the, the rally in front of the Capitol to ask the Seiko to please, I mean, um, Hawaiian Electric to please do more for you guys. And, and that's what it was. So again, I thank you guys for, you know, I don't know who would invite me from my staff. He told me to come to the meeting, but thank you guys and I thank you guys for the positive email that you guys had sent to my office. And like I said, it was no disrespect to the board members, because you guys are all volunteers. You guys represent the community and you guys doing a great job out here. And I listening to the questions and you guys all on topic. You guys doing a great job and, and thank you for whoever invited me. Appreciate you guys.
Uh, uh, Mahalo, eh? Yes, it's all aloha. Aloha. All right, go ahead, Board Member Fitzsimmons.
Uh, sorry, uh.
Can I just, that real, I wanna thank Senator for, for raising a couple of points. So I just wanna make clear that thirty days, that's the general standard, right? I'm saying we have flexibility. If people need more time, we're, we're willing to work with them, we'll help them. If they need translators, we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce to help fill out forms, that sort of thing. So.
Understood, but that's not in writing, right? What's in writing is a thirty-day deadline and that's gonna be a basis for denial. So there needs to be something in writing to amend that rule sixteen that's been in place since nineteen ninety-one, right? It's thirty-three years old. Okay. Beyond that, an article that, sorry, you know, you are in the hot seat, always right. Um, I must have all the answers, right? And, but, you know, I was remiss to read, uh, a week ago that Hiko denies nine out of ten claims in twenty twenty-three. Can we expect Hiko to not, to deny ninety percent of the claims from our community as well? Um, and you guys are, and that begs the question, what is the basis for denial, right? You're saying the cause of the blackouts could be maintenance, potentially products liability? But it's not the user, it's not the end user that caused the blackout.
Yeah.
So what is the basis, the criteria for denial? And can we expect ninety percent of the claims from our community to also be denied?
Yeah, so thanks for that question. I mean, I think that's what people are looking for. Um, again, you know, rule sixteen is the, the tariff that provides the basis and the standard for liability. And the standard is if there's something that we could have done reasonably to prevent the outage and, and we didn't do it, then we, we're liable under the stat, under that tariff. Um, a lot of the claims that we get are for outages and loss of like food and that sort of thing. But it's related to like down trees that are not on our property that we have no right to trim. They fall across the easement onto our lines. There's no way that we could reasonably prevent a neighboring landowner from, you know, their tree falling on our property or somebody hits a pole and there's an outage. That's not within our control, right? So it's those type of claims that we get a lot of and those are a large percentage of our, our outage types. And those generally will not be approved because it wasn't within our control to prevent. We don't know yet. So, I mean, the investigation is ongoing. I'm not gonna say one way or the other, but the investigation will.
One last thing, Ms. Reed, uh, had a really good question that we did, that we need to get back to as respect of.
I'm gonna get back to your question. Yeah, you're gonna go ahead and go all the way down to, um, Board Member Shulon Shubrak.
Uh, this is a follow-up. Thank you so much, Chair. I just want to clarify that the reach out to the community in Chinatown, uh, we already did that on Thursday when the power came out and our councilman actually went out and we have, uh, the forms translated in Chinese and Vietnamese.
Yep.
Hiko didn't do that. And secondly, the mayor's office of economic development also sent two staffers out to pass up forms. So on Saturday, we passed out more forms and had one-to-one. And you work with Chamber of Commerce really late Sunday at the, at the United Chinese Society is lame. It should have come from you guys. First thing to reach out to the people when it's blackout, not making excuses. Oh, we've been looking for the fault and looks like what I hear, you're not gonna pay any claims. So all our efforts are wasted because this is just a horse and pony show. Because you're not gonna pay from past record, we know you never paid out. You only pay out maybe five to ten percent of the claim because you have enough excuses to not pay out for the losses, which is so colossal and that you almost destroyed Chinatown. So there must be some funding that you have that you people, um, pay, pay rent because there's no business for a week. Internet was down for the whole five days. So this is very big that you guys don't realize because it's Chinatown. It's not, you know, a, a country club. So think about this.
Yeah, so I, I hear your frustration. Um, we do not underestimate the impact that this outage had on Chinatown. Uh, I could tell you that as soon as the outage occurred, we started reaching out. I mean, there's hundreds of customers, right? It's very difficult to reach every single one, especially the small vendors that may not be our actual customer, right? They're sub-metered under a, a larger customer. But we did start reaching out to customers as soon as the outage occurred. Uh, and as far as your translators, yeah, the, the chamber did help us with translating the form, but we have our own internal translators as well that do that when people call. So if they call and they have trouble speaking in English, we have translators that assist them as well. So we do that on our end as well and we've done that from the very beginning.
All right, so next we're gonna go answer, um, ask some questions from the call. I'm gonna let, um, Vice Chair go ahead and ask those questions, please.
Uh, Nicole's question I thought was really, really amazing, uh, with respect to, uh, public access to the maintenance records of the, the wires downtown. Uh, is there any way that we can get access to Hiko's maintenance records, uh, for the downtown area?
So I'm not sure, I, how to answer that question. I don't know if we already make those records public. I know that with respect to critical infrastructure, generally, if we do file something with the commission, it's protected under seal because there's, um, some bad actors out there that wanna get access to our, our infrastructure data. Uh, so I don't know. I don't know. So maintenance records, like say for a, a important facility that we generally wouldn't disclose where that facility is or show it on a map or show how we service it or what type of service.
Well, the, well, the detail, that detail is not important. I think she's more concerned about the dates.
Yes, so.
Like how the frequency, not like what is done or where it's at, just the frequency of the maintenance.
So what I'm saying is I, I don't know. I can find out if that's already publicly available. We might already file it. I, I just don't know. Yeah, so I, I can follow up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other board members who wishes to say anything? None? Up, go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. We'll just ask if you had a chance to review the remaining questions posted by Ms. Reed, if there were some to share now with, uh, Mr. Bailey or if they should be forwarded to him offline.
Okay, so yeah, so we're gonna go and, um, I might do one more, but the rest of it, we're gonna go ahead and share offline that he can go ahead and answer, yeah? So there was another one, um, go ahead. Do you want it to sit, speak about? No? Okay. Yeah, so she asked, she put, um, a whole bunch of other questions in the call. What we're gonna do is we're gonna send this messages so that Brandon can go ahead and address them directly to you. But there was one question that she did ask that I'm interested too. Will Hiko commit to come in and send in a representative to the downtown neighborhood board meetings every month until?
Yeah, we could do it.
You can do that. You got a commitment. All right. We appreciate that. All right. Nicole, we'll go ahead and get all your questions forwarded, um, to Brandon. Um, I wanna thank you very much. Uh, I have one more question, I believe. We're gonna go with Laurie McCartney then, um.
Um, thank you, Chair. So at this follow-up meeting next month, we should know what the root cause was.
Yeah, we're hoping it'll be done, like I said, thirty days from the outage. So that's our target. That's what.
Yeah, so that's, that's thirty days.
So when is your next meeting?
So, um, our next meeting will be August first, Thursday. Our meetings are always on the first Thursdays.
And if it's not close to being done by that time, then I can work with the chair to give him a heads up just in case he wanna amend your agenda.
Cause I think, I think that would be very helpful for us to know. Maybe it'll be in the media before that.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing would be the update on how many claims you received, what percentage of the businesses you've heard of, heard from.
So.
I know you have sub, sub-metered people, but I think for us to understand sort of how the community is being served and how that process is progressing with the, um, with the claims.
Yeah.
That would be helpful and something you should be prepared with probably. But I think for us to understand sort of how the community is being served and how that process is progressing with the um with the claims, that would be helpful and something you should be prepared with probably.
So so far we've received a hundred and about a hundred and fifty claims so far.
Do you know what percentage that is of the um customer base?
No, but I can try to pull that. So our, yeah, I can, the the customer base is a little. It's because of the master meter is our customer, right? But there's like, say, in a condo, that's not submetered, there could be four hundred people in that condo that are customers but not our customer.
I understand. So maybe if you can just, if you can just qualify, like I'm in a condo, if you say that, you know, this master customer. That will, that will help give us an idea of how well our um population, our residents are being served. And if there are groups of people that haven't been able to get a claim in or whatever, that could be really helpful.
Yeah, I think we can put that information together.
Okay, so um, board member Ross, Ross is fine.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Cortera.
I know Mr. Cortez, I'm gonna get, I'll get, but Mr. Cortez, in the future, will you please, when we go to online. Um, do it online, yeah? All right, do 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 the online version with us. Go ahead, Robert Cotera.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to get back real quick to uh board members' question on the utility rates. Uh, so Kohai was the most expensive in twenty twenty-one. Uh, this year they're the lowest uh with inflation. And interestingly, they're leading the way with uh renewables. Uh, so I just wanted to ask, uh, is there a commitment by Hiko? Because Molokai right now is the highest at fifteen something percent. Oahu is the second at over fourteen percent. So is there something the public can do to help with renewables or help Hiko? And is there a commitment or anything that Hiko can do to stabilize any rate increases?
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, if we had our 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 way, all of our customers would participate in at least one of our programs, either for rooftop solar or energy storage. Uh, we think we have some pretty uh good opportunities for customers to help reduce their bills. Um, the challenge is that not everybody has the the means to make that happen, right? It it takes money to invest in that kind of thing. But there's. You know, there's, there's programs that we're working on to help every single customer that we can put rooftop solar or participate in the renewable energy uh transition. Uh, and then, like I said, you know, we're, we just went out for another RFP for uh renewable energy. You'll, you'll see these projects popping up all over town, you know, a lot of solar projects, not so much wind uh on Oahu anymore, but a lot of uh, a lot of good opportunities to uh transition to renewables.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm actually gonna close this out, this portion out. I thank you for actually coming down very much and speaking. It was very, very important just to hear what you first have to say. And with your commitment to follow up next month, until we get this taken care of, we are truly concerned about our neighborhood. There's a lot of mom and pop shops that cannot recover and they need recovery. Um. Yeah, so how would, just one quick one. How would Hiko take it if we had asked? The governor of the state of Hawaii to go ahead and do a proclamation and just pay off everybody right now? And that Hiko would be charged for it and Hiko would pay it back, the state. How? Would he could react to that? Because I know he has the power to do a proclamation and then the um incoming um legislators have a power to also legislate that.
Uh, that's probably above my pay grade, but I I can tell you that there's a process that, you know, usually goes through it. I I don't, I'm not sure that would fly through the Public Utilities Commission. There, there needs to be some coordination.
Okay, yeah, I I just. Brandon, I really appreciate you and your team coming down here. And thank you for job well done.
Yeah, no, thank you, guys. I I I do appreciate it. Yeah.
And if anyone online or anyone, the board members can have any questions for Brandon for next month, let's get them ahead of time so we can get coordinations going so they know what's coming up and they can run through this, all right?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. You have a great day. Thank you very much. Aloha. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you. So next we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, public concerns. Anyone that has a public concern online? Not not hearing none. See none? Anyone in the audience? Not hearing none? Seeing none? Uh, okay, Robert?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just have one concern. So we had an emergency here in the building and EMS couldn't go upstairs. Uh, so one of our tenants here was able to take him up one floor below. Uh, they went in the stairwell and banged on the stairwell until somebody did come. So uh my question is, how do we rectify that uh so that uh EMS comes to the building, they have the same kind of access that H HFD has? Uh, so I'm not sure who to ask this question to, uh, but uh, that's a dangerous situation. Uh, is there uh any guidance that I might have?
Okay, so during public concerns, technically we can't answer long. We can give dates, times and all that, but what I'll do is I'll send your message over to um Travis Thompson, who's not here today and see what he can say. All right?
Chair, we should.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, there's no monthly reports in this agenda. Okay.
There is, there's none. Next month we'll come back on. All right, I did this for several reasons. Um, I wanted to get, say, um, Happy New Year's and all that. Yeah, I'm happy Fourth of July. But thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that has any public concerns? All right, board members? Nope. Kevin line?
Chair, thank you. Um, a few things uh that I'm rising as a member of the community that have been brought that I wanted to share. Uh, but first, I wonder if there's a way that we could not necessarily need to print the distributed minutes in color. I don't know if there's a true cost differential these days in color versus black and white, but I thought that was not necessary. Maybe uh NCO can let us know about that next month. But I hinted at this earlier regarding Kamali Mini Park. Uh, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to share some of the pictures that have been sent to me and that have been collected otherwise about the area. We all know where it is, next to Central Fire Station Number One. During this week, I did reach out to HFD to find out exactly which of the communities, uh committees or departments within the city and county. That property has been transferred. As we know, Captain Bates was here in April and said that it had been transferred, but he didn't know to where. Hopefully, we'll have some facts and information about that next month. We uh, we talked about some of the outcomes of what's going on in Kamali Mini Park. This board, in fact, eleven years and a month ago, discussed some ideas of what could be done about that park. And also there's information in the budget about how to do this through the next couple of years within the the city and county. But what we're seeing is is frankly dangerous. Uh, we're just piles of trash. Uh, we've got people bringing couches and chairs to the area and eventually uh turns into a spectator sport where people are bringing fans. I don't know where they're plugging in the fan, but it's there. And then they're just kind of keeping an eye on things. Um, there are, as we know, the concrete hexagons in the park and we'll note that there are definitely recurring um. Items that are there day after day after day despite the fact that after ten PM, as it is a park, uh, they should not be there. There is an ordinance in the city that says no. Um, tents with walls are permitted. But here's the key point, H HPD did come and chat with the group, as was mentioned earlier. Uh, but what happened was they were just advised to go to the uh other retaining walls where they might.
One half, you asked you to wind it down, two minutes is up. Go ahead.
Almost to two minutes. Yes, sir. But the slippery slope is there until we see again the Palace is being built in this area. So we need to develop a plan. There are proposals about dog parks and otherwise resurfacing of the area, but I think that our board needs to take a stand in helping protect the citizens in the area and helping protect their interest. Uh, things can go from there to worse, and we've all seen it happen in other places. Thank you, Chair.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Is there any other public concerns out there? Nope. Hearing none, seeing none. We're gonna go ahead and move on. Next is the four of minutes for Thursday, May second, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting written summary for video record. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, board member.
I move that we um adopt the May second regular meeting minutes or summary.
Okay, any discussions? We're gonna go ahead with my slide.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask if the maker of the motion clarified that the request is to approve the amended draft written record that's posted in the Google Drive for public and board member review. If so, then I'll second the motion.
Okay, second. All right, so this is to approve um the May second twenty twenty-four regular meetings as in the Google Drive. All right, any other discussions? Hearing none? It is, uh, any objections? Hearing none, it is approved. Next, we're gonna go on to Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, written summary for video. And this should, uh, I would once again say, this is what the one that we want to dictate is the one that is in the Google Drive. All right?
Make a motion to uh to approve.
Okay, and we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussions? Not hearing any discussions. Do we have any objections? Not hearing. Access. So both these are passed. All right, thank you. Um, the next downtown Chinatown neighborhood board, number thirteen, regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August first, twenty twenty-four, at six o'clock PM. Kelly Okolani Middle School and virtually via Webex. It's also gonna be put on to YouTube, we progress of downtown Chinatown neighborhood. Number thirteen meetings are scheduled on a little channel forty-nine every third, Thursdays at nine o'clock PM as well as nine o'clock AM on the fourth Saturdays. Everyone, I'm sorry, I'm. Agenda short, but I knew a lot of people had their holidays coming up and I wanted everyone to have a happy Fourth of July. So everybody, this uh meeting is now closed. All right, everyone have a good, happy Fourth of July. Thank you. Bye-bye. If anybody can help me put these things back.